This is my senior moment. Let's call the meeting to order and ask for a roll call.
Blounier.
Here.
Leach.
Here.
Layman.
Here.
Mendel.
Here.
Newman.
Here.
Parrott.
We have a quorum.
Kind of like you join me in a pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
There are no public hearings, but I do have a little presentation for the public. I would like to talk a little bit about what's happening in Morton, especially what's happened this last weekend. So, you know, we've been through the COVID world this last year, but I'm here to tell you there's a lot of good things happening in Morton, Illinois. The staff is working on things, and we were working on something last Saturday. So, I'd like to announce last Saturday that at 8 o'clock, myself, Leanne Brown with the chamber and a few others met at Leaves and Beans and had some coffee, some muffins, and some delicious sandwiches, and we met a film company from New York. Yeah, a film company from New York met us there, and that is Candace Kane, the owner, director and writer, and her director of photography, Nelson Smith. And you're saying, why were they, why are they in Morton? Well, I asked the same question a few months ago when I got a phone call from them, and I'm gonna let Leanne Brown tell that story, how they connected with us. But through that conversation, she was, Candace was very friendly. She wanted to know about Morton. We hit it off, believe it or not. She can talk as, almost as fast as I can and cover as much ground and a lot of subject matter. So, we hit it off. I invited her to Morton, and I told her I'd take her out for lunch, because I was just like you people here, probably wondering what a film crew's doing in Morton. So, at coffee, we found out the reason why, and me and Leanne had been in contact with her. Candace has written a script about an international baking competition of pumpkin pies. And so, when she decided to write that, she looked up pumpkin pie and, of course, Morton, Illinois, pumpkin capital of the world came up. So, she contacted us earlier this year, had that conversation, and I thought, okay, if I can just get her to Morton. So, we did that. Now, I want everyone to know, the film is sold to Pure Flex, a faith-based organization. It's a 90-minute film, and it is gonna start filming May 16th. And it has to be out for publication by September 1st. Those dates cannot be changed. She has, I think, five films under contract with them. So, hearing that, those things, I thought, you know, we have a lot to get done when she's only here for a day and the next morning, because she had Saturday and a little bit on Sunday morning. So, after coffee, me and Leanne put a roadmap together of where they wanted to be, where we thought they needed to be, how quickly we could get through community. And I'm gonna let her tell the story of what she told Nelson before they got in my truck. And yes, I did dust my truck out a little bit to get two people, two more people in there. So, anyhow, we took a road trip of Morton. I just wanna tell you a little bit of what happened. I was with them from 8 o'clock in the morning till 7:30 at night. We were still texting back and forth till around 11:30. But we traveled Morton, then we stopped at the Plaza. We happened to catch the Mark Johnson family and grandkids, got some filming done, went to Luan's and, Lulu's, I'm sorry, Lulu's across the street. There was a car in the way, so I offered to get it out of the way. I was shocked how far away movies are filmed. They're across the street, and so they stayed across the street, but then they needed six extras, so I went in and got people. Two ladies had just moved to Morton. I tried to make a believer we were really doing a movie. But anyhow, when we left there, they wanted to go to confectionery, which is one of the main stops of the movie, and they said to me they need a police car. And I said, "You need a what?" And they said, "A police car." I says, "Okay." So, I knew the chief is out of town, so I called the deputy. You have to realize he's only been the deputy chief for a couple of weeks, and I called him. I go, "Deputy Chief Sean, we need a police car officer up here at confectionery for a little bit for a film." I thought he wasn't gonna, he took it pretty good. And I says, "I also need a new one with the blue striping." I want you to know, Jason doing that new police striping looks very good on film. So, this one scene was the police car coming down in front of the confectionery with two people walking into the confectionery and two people walking out with a pie. So, at the end of the scene, I tried to stay out of their way all day, because everything they wanted to get done, I didn't know if they could get that done in about 12 hours. I didn't think they could. So, they said, "Jeff, look at this." I go, "No, I don't have to see it." She said, "No, look at it." So, I watched it, it's on a film about that big, and it looked really good. But then they showed me the trailer of another movie they've sold and done, and it was the same camera and the same photographer. And I'm here to tell you, it's very quality. So, through that, we're driving through town, and I'm listening to their conversation. And I want the public to know a few things. During the last campaign, they interviewed me, and they wanted to know what the three most important things were about Morton. I told them the citizens, the staff, and the infrastructure. And I want you to know that was true Saturday, because they constantly talked about how clean the town was, how beautiful, well-kept, the roads. They were astonished to the point that Nelson told Candace, "Boy, your husband would love this town." And he said, "Oh, yeah, my husband's a cop. They live about an hour and a half below the Hamptons in New York." And throughout the conversation, the next comment was, you know, "It'd really be neat to film this entire movie right here in Morton." And I'm listening, I go, "You people do that?" And they go, "Yeah, we do that." And so, then Nelson says it wouldn't cost that much, but Candace, the businesswoman she has, she rattled off the figures, the added costs, all the added things that was. So, I had that info, and it continued like that all through the day. I think our last shot with me was maybe at the high school. We had several there in the last half hour. And so, I listened to this, but me and Candace had a chance to talk, because it takes them a while to set the camera up. So, I asked her just what it would take to get the film actually filmed in Morton, Illinois, the entire thing. She told me we worked through it. So, what I've done is asked Pat to work up the contract. We have a contract, we're working with them. I've called a special meeting for Wednesday night at 7 o'clock, and if it's approved, the entire movie will be filmed in Morton. As of right now, all the filming they did Saturday will go back to New York, will be spliced into a movie that they're gonna use another facility or town in New York. But they really do like Morton. They were fascinated with it, they stayed at a B and B. But they talked about the hotel rooms, lodging they need, the rental cars, the beauticians. They're not bringing their own beauticians, lodging, food, all the things that they would be purchasing. And you know, our job is to promote Morton. It's tourism money from the hotel motel tax. So, this is definitely gonna put Morton on the map. So, I'm gonna be asking the trustees to put Morton on the map with an actual movie made. It's sold to Pure Flex. It could be marketed in several different ways, even in her European market. So, where it's all going, I don't know, but that's the story, and I'm gonna have Leanne add a little something to it.
Thank you, Jeff. Yeah, it was definitely exciting times over this last weekend. Definitely making, I don't know, maybe 100 laps around Morton with a lot of different people. But this dates back to January 4th. Received an email from Candace Kane with Jamelli Films titled, "Hallmark-style film set in Morton offering product placement." So, you can imagine a few of our wheels were turning around the office of, what's this? Who's emailing us? Is, what's the validity to this? And sometimes you just get that feeling where you just need to make a phone call and learn more. So, I called Candace, Candace answered, chatted with her for a good hour on the phone, asking her about her history, the films, the companies. And that's when she shared that she has a contract with Pure Flex. She's done other movies with X, Y, and Z companies, and she's a producer and writer. And here's where she's from and who she's worked with. And so, validated that by trying to do some research. And finally said, you know, "I think we need to explore this and share the information out to our businesses and let them know we have had this conversation, this is what we know. And if you're interested in being a part of the film production, here is the opportunity." And then in short order, reached out to Jeff, our mayor, and said, "Jeff, this is what I know. And here's her phone number, you two need to talk, and you validate her through your conversation." And that's kinda where the relationship started. And so, in short order, they, they wanted to make a trip here to immerse themselves into our, the pumpkin capital of the world and really start to formulate the storyline around content and setting. And that's what led them to visit us this weekend and spent a lot of time talking about our Morton businesses, our community, and coffee time at Leaves and Beans with several of the companies that, Morton businesses that have already decided to do product placement or actually be featured in the film. And after meeting Candace that morning, her personality is much like Jeff. And so, I scooted after Leaves and Beans for a little bit for a couple of family commitments and kinda looked at Nelson, and I said, "I wish you the best of luck." And he just kinda looked at me like, "I'm well-groomed, I'm well-prepared. You see I deal with Candace." I'm like, "Well, now you got two of them, so good luck to ya." So, but it really is about television tourism. I mean, think about the movies or books that you've read. You know, there's probably a story or those that you know that have traveled and, oh, do you remember? We're gonna be by that house or by that coffee shop or by that museum or by that place that was in that movie. And we want to experience it. And so, this is the story that really unfolded that day of how can we really put the pumpkin capital of the world on, on the map and really get people, timing, come back for Pumpkin Festival to enjoy the pumpkin capital of the world as the movie will be released September 1st. And short, short time after that, we'll be able to welcome people back for our Pumpkin Festival. So, "Baking Up Love" is the formal title of, of the movie with the contract with Pure Flex. So, more things, I think, on the horizon and additional announcements to come, I believe, so.
Yeah, the title is "Baking Up Love." It's a love story surrounding the international baking contest. I do know who the winner is already, but I can't tell you. Any public comments tonight? Seeing none, the consent agenda tonight is approval of the minutes, the regular meeting April 5th, 2021, and the approval of the bills. If I have motion, please.
I move to approve.
Second.
Any comments, questions? If not, call the roll.
Blounier.
Yes.
Leach.
Yes.
Layman.
Yes.
Mendel.
Yes.
Newman.
Yes.
Parrott.
Yes.
Motion passes.
I only have one item tonight. It's ordinance 21-45, an ordinance making amendments regarding hours of service for liquor license Class J to Chapter 8 of the Title III of the Morton Municipal Code.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I'll explain this one when we updated the ordinance setting or expanding the available hours of service. There's a transcriptional error made in the hours of service for Class J licenses, so this corrects it. It takes it back to what was the original standard, this is a caterer's license, but expands that first hour from what used to be 11:00 AM to 10:00. So, it's fixing a typo essentially.
Thank you. Any questions? If not, call the roll.
Leach.
Yes.
Layman.
Yes.
Mendel.
Yes.
Newman.
Yes.
Parrott.
Yes.
Blounier.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Village Clerk.
Nothing tonight, Your Honor.
Village Administrator's still on vacation. Chief of Police is on vacation. And the Village Administrator, you know, it's interesting, she left when we're talking about tourism. Corporation Council, nothing tonight, Your Honor. And Director of Fire Emergencies is not here. Director of Public Works.
I have several items tonight, Your Honor. First is just an announcement to make everyone aware, it is on our website, but the Village Morton Bulky Item Pickup is scheduled for your regular garbage day for May 3rd through May 7th week. So, this is some of our citizens' favorite week and Grim Brothers' least favorite week. So, I'll keep, we'll keep announcing that, but be prepared. Next would be Item B in front of you. This is ordinance 21-44, an ordinance making amendments regarding connection fee for natural gas line for residential customers to Chapter 2 of Title 8 of the Morton Municipal Code.
I move approval of ordinance 21-44, second.
Craig, you wanna explain that?
Yeah, so, I think this goes back into the late 90s. You know, every couple of years, they would review the gas superintendent, the cost for labor material and equipment to install residential service lines for customers. It's in ordinance, so it's, it's basically a fixed cost. The last one was reviewed in 2017, it was $1,160, which is the current ordinance. We would like to increase that to $1,500 going forward.
Thank you. Any questions?
Yes, why is, the main question I guess I have is, why $1,500? Why that big of a job?
Yeah, so, obviously, that's, that's labor, equipment, and material. So, just to give a summary, I can give you all the details. But typically, it basically covers 60 foot is an average. So, it takes about four hours of time for three men on average. On the short side of the street, we would dig it. On the long side, we would bore it. So, it's about six hours if we bore it. It's two hours if we dig it. And these are literally the actual cost. Labor, we do put a, you know, a two multiplier on that just to cover some other things. Material ends up being 40% of that. Equipment's about 10%, and labor's about 50%. So, basically, that's really covering our costs when we're doing this work for a new residential customer.
Was that the case in 2017, too, when it was $1,160?
Yes, yes. And it's, it goes back to 1999 when it was $650. So, yeah, that does equal, you know, it's about a 6.5% annual increase if you go back to 1999. But those are the costs. I mean, I do have a breakdown of everything. You know, Scott puts together, I mean, it's got every piece of material from the pipe to the tapping tee, to the meter valve, to stainless nipples, couplings, all that. So, he does a very detailed, and likewise Lon Barkdall did. So, it's pretty much the cost of doing business. Obviously, we could subsidize some of that if we needed to, but, you know, this has been done for several decades. And like I said, it was four years ago when we last did it.
Okay. And last question, it says, "Commercial and," what was the other?
Industrial.
Industrial. So, not residential.
Yes, so, commercial, obviously, there's a, there's a wide range when we do commercial. Some of that based on the meter size. So, we do that timing material. So, when a new job comes in, say it be Aldi's, the daycare, Morton Rentals, basically Scott Stidman will run through that and provide a detailed estimate to Brad. I get involved if there's an issue or something. And basically, that's T and M. But we do charge that fee at the permit. Typically, we're not coming under that. I think over the last several decades, we've kind of checked back as a reimbursement, because it was a lot easier. But those are, there's a wide range, you know, from three grand to sometimes 20 grand it may cost, depending on the length, the size of meter is a big change. So, that's always been done, T and M.
Any other questions? Call the roll.
Layman.
Yes.
Mendel.
Yes.
Newman.
Yes.
Parrott.
Yes.
Blounier.
Yes.
Leach.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Next item is Item C, like ask for acceptance of bid for the 2021 miscellaneous concrete repairs project in the amount of $708,726.83 and award of contract for same to Autobomb Company Incorporated.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any comments? Call the roll.
I have one.
Go ahead.
Those bids are really close. I think that's awesome. I think that speaks to the, the good bidding practices that we have, that bids are that close. I mean, that's, that's tight. It's close. You know, what, 6,000, 5,000 between bids of that size? I think that's, that speaks numbers.
It does. Yeah.
All right, that's all.
Anybody else? Call the roll.
Mendel.
Yes.
Newman.
Yes.
Parrott.
Yes.
Blounier.
Yes.
Leach.
Yes.
Layman.
Yes.
Motion passes.
And last is Item D, I'd like to ask for acceptance of bid for the rectangular rapid flashing beacon improvements project in the amount of $69,530.95 and award of contract for same to Laser Electric Incorporated.
They're motion? I move to approve.
Second.
I would like to mention that, and I talked to Pat about this, the bid came in a little higher than expected. I still would like to move forward. I've been in contact with Dr. Hill for the school district and have asked him, as we did previously, to pay for half, and in this case would be half, or not to exceed $35,000. They are gonna bring that, or he is, to their board at the May 4th meeting. So, any approval here, I would say would be contingent on that. Depending on what happens there, we can always come back, and it's still within that bid timeframe. So, at this point, our approval would be, you know, if there was an extra over 70, I guess I'm taking that risk if there was something that came up out there. But we've had a good relationship with the school district, so I'm confident we could work through that. But my intentions here tonight, we would pay for, you know, $35,000 of that, and they would pay for the other $35,000. And these would be two school crossings. So, to update the current one, and it's basically same location, we do have to redo the ramps with the exception of the one on the north, the northwest side in front of the junior high. And then this would add a new crossing at Illinois, which, I'll be honest, this is something I've really wanted to see for a long time, and I think the school district, too. So, while the kids may not cross there, there will be an opportunity for the kids to safely cross at Illinois for the high school. So, I think this is a really good improvement for the kids of our community that are going to our two schools.
I have a couple, couple of comments. First of all, I think anything we can do to increase pedestrian safety around that area. I know taking, you take your son to school there every morning, and I take my daughter to school, and there is, there are kids everywhere, there are cars everywhere. And anything we can do in that area in the morning to make things safer, I think, is, is fantastic. Second thing, these rapid flashing beacons, I haven't seen those out and about, you know, five years ago, but in the last couple of years, you start seeing them a lot more. Down and forth this spring, they had really busy streets, and they had these, I don't know, it was probably every thousand feet or so. They had these crossings on a main drag, you know, a four-lane, you know, or five-lane main drag. They had these every thousand feet, and they seemed to work really well to get, be, for people to be able to get across the street. You know, because you're never gonna, with a five lanes of traffic, you're never gonna have a, a period of time where there's not gonna be any cars we can run across. And, and you don't want kids trying to run across in front of cars anyway. I think this is great to be able to stop the cars at the crosswalks and get the kids across.
And you will be able to use the push button 24/7/365. It is solar, there is a battery. We will maintain that going forward. But I know, Mayor, we've talked for quite some time leaving basketball games. Now, we're gonna have a nice, beautiful parking lot on the north side. But you will be able to use that at night, too, which should be really bright now. It should be a lot safer for pedestrians, too.
We'll be able to talk about something else now?
Yes. I'm sure of that.
Will there be a crossing guard there also?
Yes. These have gone through IDOT. I know there's been some question over that standard. But my intentions right now, the schools, and from what I'm getting from IDOT is, yes, there'll be a crossing guard, or they're welcome to have a crossing guard there. So, all these had to be approved since it's Jackson Street or US 150 through IDOT.
Thanks for getting that done finally. Any other questions? Call the roll.
Newman.
Yes.
Parrott.
Yes.
Blounier.
Yes.
Leach.
Yes.
Layman.
Yes.
Mendel.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Sony and code enforcement, Brad?
Nothing tonight, Your Honor.
All right, I'd like to jump back. I know Leanne has an announcements to make. I want you, if you'd like to do that now. Apologize to the board, we were gonna take care of that earlier, and we didn't.
No problem. Again, Leanne Brown with the Morton Chamber of Commerce. This week, it is approaching our community cleanup. So, April 22nd is our community cleanup. Weather tomorrow is interesting, but by Thursday, I think the snow or whatever we're getting will hopefully be gone, and we can be outside. So, we have a couple of audiences. We've invited businesses to sign up a team and be a part of our cleanup to go out and clean up specific areas throughout the day. And then we're hosting a citizen community signup at the library from 3 to 4 o'clock. We will have items available, a goodie bag, cleanup gloves, water, trash bags, and leaf bags available. We'll have specific areas ready to distribute people out to to clean up the fence lines around our community. And then people are welcome to bring back their items, the trash bags, the leaf bags, back to the library. Grims is going to bring an additional receptacle down there to collect the, the trash. And there is a recycle bin there at the library as well. So, they'll dump both of those for the library on Friday morning. So, we encourage citizens, you know, do what you can. If you can just get outside around your, your yard, your neighborhood, your business, and help us clean up. Or if you really wanna come celebrate, come to the library. They're gonna have activities. We'll have a goodie bag and equip people to get out, clean up, and bring your, your trash and your recyclables back to the library for Grims to take care of them on Friday morning. So, we thank you in advance for helping us. We have a great, beautiful community, and it takes all of us to keep at that. And we know those fence lines catch a lot of trash. So, if we can get out there and clean those up, I know we can make a great impact. So, this Thursday, April 22nd, is also Earth Day, so thank you.
Thank you. And I do have an announcement on "Baking for Love." As of right now, I've been notified that Candace Kane has been asked to be on an Illinois morning show discussing the Morton movie. So, it's already got the title, "Morton Movie: Baking for Love," and it will be on a morning show. Probably need the mayor, so we'll see. So, all right, village trustees. Trustee Leach.
Yes, Your Honor. Just want to make the announcement that the village has received approval from the Illinois DCEO to extend our ES grant program for businesses within the village of Morton. The rules are still the same as last December. The only difference is now it can include the month of December. So, any business that had applied for a grant through March through November last December will be able to apply for December this year. It still only covers the year 2020. No 2021 expenses can be included. Types of expenses that are allowed are utility costs, which would include things like water, electricity, gas, waste disposal, or garbage, sanitation sewer fees, telephones, and internet. It includes mortgage and lease or rent payments for business property within the village of Morton. And the businesses that can apply will have had to have had a reduced sales of 25% for whatever period they're covering, whether it's for just the month of December or for the whole 10 months or nine months. Businesses that can't apply would be those who've already received a big grant. Also, businesses that have sales greater than $1 million in 2019 and 2020, and they have to have less than 51 employees. You can imply, the forms and the registration information is on our website. I assume the EDC has it on their website as well. So, you can go to www.morton-il.gov. And sorry, I don't know your website, Leanne. I have to look on my phone, and I don't carry my phone with me. But anyway, you can go, the rules are there, and then the application forms are there. And I think it's a fillable form on the internet as well, and you'd be able to print it off. If you have any questions at all, you would need to contact Village Administrator so that we don't have any confusion about what things are allowed and what aren't allowed. And you have to do it exactly the way And you have to do it exactly the way that it says, as far as providing the documentation for expenses, whether it's a copy of your rent checks or your lease or your mortgage payment. You have to give us your utility, copies of your utility bills, and we have to have those. And then we would probably, we also have to have things like, if you pay sales tax, we have to have those completed so that we know that those things have been paid as well. So if you have any questions, first, I'd say go to the website and look, and then if you have any questions, call the village and ask for Village Administrator, except she's on vacation this week, so you'll have to wait until next week. But you might ask, when are the applications due? They're due by 5:00 PM, May 14th. Payment will be made before June 30th of 2021. Any questions?
Any restriction on the type of business that can apply?
No, I'm sorry, thank you for bringing that up. Any business within the village of Morton can apply, and the maximum you can request or that you might be granted would be $25,000. Depending upon the number of businesses, we have $237,000 or something like that, or $223,000 to work with. So if we get a lot of businesses apply, no one may get $25,000. But if there aren't a lot, some may. So the maximum grant would be $25,000. Any business within the village of Morton limits can apply.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Yes, just one. With regard to the bulky item pickup, is it clear, clearly outlined on the Morton website, what is acceptable and what's not?
Yeah. It is posted on there. I did bring a copy of that. I'm going to find where I put it now. But yeah, it is clearly stated on there.
Well, as long as, I just wanted to make sure.
Yes, it is. I'm trying to find where I put that, but I do have a copy here I can share with you.
I'll go on the website.
So it's on the front page under announcements. It says bulky item. If you click on that, it's got a paragraph that we've used for the past how many years? It's pretty much the same thing. So if there's any questions, call us at Village Hall. We're glad to work with Grim Brothers, too, and communicate if there's some oddball item that's not included on there. Mark Grims, fantastic at Grim Brothers, so we can get you an answer.
All right, thank you. And trustees, anyone else have anything tonight?
I just wanted to comment on the film. Obviously, really neat that that's, you know, coming to town. For those who aren't familiar with Pure Flex, Pure Flex is a massive company, has done a lot of great productions that they've helped produce. So a few of my favorites include Case for Christ, God's Not Dead, two very famous films, and a film that was recently in theaters, well, pre-COVID, was a movie called Unplanned, which is a very good film as well. So anyway, it's pretty neat that that's a production company that picked it up, so.
And she actually has, I think she has to produce five movies for him, so it's a pretty good deal. So we, anybody else have anything? Nothing? We do need a closed session tonight.
Closed session is requested tonight for the purpose of discussing collective negotiating matters between the village and its employees or their representatives per five ILCS 120/2C2.
So if we could have a motion to go to closed session?